I went to the farming.
Yeah.
Call the Benton County Board of Commissioners to order. Begin the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Who's excuse?
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kapinski's out today, so I'm the vice chair, so I'll be running the meeting. Approve or amend the agenda. What do we have?
We have no changes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. County board meetings are broadcast live and video, recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that your views can be heard. The county board observes the Robert rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or the public hearings. However, public comments on other agendas items may also be allowed to be at the discretion of the county board chair. As we begin today, please turn your cell phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum? Nobody's on open forum. We have the consent agenda. We have items one through four. What's your wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approve, opposed, carried. Consent, or county administrator, Monte Hedley.
Who speak for the airport?
Yes.
Alright.
Are you going to go through the presentation show?
Then you can just use this little clicker right there.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Good morning.
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 Your chair and commissioners. Morning. Happy to be here. John Quaidy from the St. Cloud Regional Airport Commission. I'm secretary on the commission, joined today by Kevin Johnson. We're both your Benton County representatives and then also Bill Towell, our executive director of the airport. So, just wanted to give you a little update on the Regional Airport Commission. Trust you have the information in front of you as well. We've got a couple full years now behind us as the full airport commission started in January of twenty-two to get that approval. And one of the first projects that we wanted to tackle was with our consultant engineer, Meeden Hunt. We approached our strategic plan. It was really time to take a look at the strategic plan for the St. Cloud Airport and update that information. So, I'd really like to share that with you, the results of it, and be happy to answer questions and at the end or at any point, get Bill and Kevin up here as well if you so choose. Well, I want to start out by sharing, first of all, we took a look at our mission. The St. Cloud Regional Airport provides quality air transportation services that safely connect users to their destinations while driving economic growth and prosperity for the Northwest Metro and the Central Minnesota area. You know, this airport commission now has really taken a much bigger area with the three counties, the city, and has a bigger constituent group, and we really are seeing some of the benefits of that. As you take a look at some of the studies that have been done over the last few years, MINDOT had done one, or the state had done one. Forty-nine million dollars is really the amount of economic impact on our region that has driven through the airport and hopefully going to continue to grow from there. If you take a look at our vision, St. Cloud Regional Airport strives to be the regional airport of choice for Northwest Metro and Central Minnesota. You know, we've added through this strategic planning process the Northwest Metro. As you look at the congestion in the Twin Cities, the travel times, we really want to draw, and with Sherburne County Elk River area being one of our partners in this, we really want to draw those folks that are looking to travel out of the Northwest Metro, including the greater Central Minnesota area, and in the past, we were drawing from Northern Minnesota and a lot of those areas. So, really wanted to address that Northwest Metro. Hopefully, they're coming up to Central Minnesota to use those airport services. Our core values at the regional airport, our code name is STC, so we use that as safety and service. You know, we want to have facilities and services that enhance safety for all users. We've currently got a grant that is coming through. We're going to get a new air, a new fire truck for the airport that was at the end of the life. That's supposed to be delivered here sometime this year. So, looking to really improve that safety, enhance our service, be able to plow timely, have reliable service to keep our air carriers coming in. Transportation access, we offer transportation service for all users, including commercial air service, general aviation, military, air cargo, and intermodal connections. You know, we don't have a steady air cargo, but it's amazing the amount of supplies and various parts, things that come through the St. Cloud Airport. As you know, we have Allegiant, which has numerous flights to two destinations at various times during the year. We still have Sun Country that is doing some of these charter flights on a regular basis that go out of there. Got a lot of corporate jets, a lot of corporate aircraft, more that are expressing interest in coming to our airfield. Then we have the National Guard. Very happy to have that partnership with the National Guard. They've got about twelve helicopters up there at all times, about seventy full-time employees that work out of that National Guard Center, and as they do their trainings on weekends, there's anywhere between two and three hundred people that come in for those trainings to work through. So, we absolutely would like to see as the National Guard expands more in the future here, looks at changing over their aircraft, hopefully we'll be able to maintain and grow that amount of aircraft that we get in our partnership with the National Guard. And community and culture is the last C. Welcome people from around the world into the region, fostering that collaborative, supportive culture. So, our organizational strategic objectives, we have six of them. Tried to keep it in a manageable amount, that this is what our board and executive director are looking at. Want to explore financial enhancement and revenue opportunities, so we're looking at developing revenue diversification enhancement. As you know, I, we've implemented pay-for-parking. We've done a couple increases on that. We just need to maintain. That had never been done in the fast, in the past, and in the past year, that generated about two-hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So, you look at maintaining and growing, we want to be more self-sustaining and be able to provide those services and expand parking in the future. So, pay-for-parking was one of the major things we looked at. We're trying to build a reserve into our budget. When it was part of the city, they really ran on a pay-as-you-go more, and we're not able to do that as a smaller entity, so we've been working to be fiscally responsible, put some reserves aside each year. Want to explore private partnerships and ways to finance some private hangars. Been working with some of the financing, some of the banks that do that, to be able to bring some more private hangars to the airport. Want to leverage the facilities to support regional economic development, working with our local EDAs. As we move over to expanding air transportation services, we really have one of our board members and our executive staff, they're continually working to expand our, our commercial air service, working with Allegiance, Sun Country, and some of those. Want to engage air carrier reps through some of these national conferences. Our group has been attending them, just trying to grow. Now that we have pay-for-parking and we have our parking managed, it's working. It not only is generating some revenue, but it's managing the capacity. Now, we're able to take on some more. If you'd have gone through a few years ago, they were parked in the county road ditch and all over out there, we really couldn't take on anymore. And now, we actually have pulled in this morning to come over here with Bill, and we have room, and it's our, our peak season. So, we're comfortable that with the revenue we're generating, our budget is in a better position, and we're in a position now where we could take on more service and be able to provide a good service. As we look at support growth of general aviation, we're constructing a new tea hanger. That project started last year. Going to be a little higher-end tea hanger, so it'll have heat in it and some other amenities. We have a lot of interests. People are going to want to move into that. That opens up some of the existing tea hangars, allows for us to work on a list. There's always a list of people that are waiting to get a hanger at the St. Cloud Airport. And then I mentioned, we want to explore the expansion opportunities with the Army Aviation Facility. So, if we take a look at the next one, we want to employ and develop top talent. We have just an excellent executive director in Bill, but as any good business needs to take a look at, we didn't have a lot of staff behind Bill. A few maintenance folks that do just a phenomenal job, but we've been looking to grow that. So, we were able to hire an assistant executive director. He came over actually from the air traffic control tower, so very well-versed in, in the industry and doing a nice job to help support Bill, and then we've been able to make, do a couple hires on our maintenance folks as well, so things are going well on the talent side of the business. We want to enhance best-in-class aviation facilities. We got, as probably many of you heard, and I think some of you were at some of these grant when the senators were here a year ago, but we were able to get some grants to help us make some improvements. One of the biggest is removing our runway thirty-one displaced threshold. So, a number of years ago, that was constructed, the runway was extended, but the aviation, the light system, and some of that is old and needs repair and not able to use it to its fullest potential. So, we've got about six million dollars now. Four million came through the legislature, a million through MINDOT, and then a million through the FAA. That's going to make this six-million-dollar project where we can enhance our runway possible. We've upgraded through another grant, a number of air traffic control tower radios. We've reconfigured and expanded the parking lot, as I kind of mentioned. We're going to need some repairs in the future to expand, but it's not quite as imminent as it was when it was so full before. But we want to continue to take a look at that and, and make changes. Developed an additional multi-plane storage facility, so this is the tea hanger. We also have this new hanger development area where individual companies can come in, build their own hangars, so we're working hard on that. We're going to do a project this year to enhance the drainage and get that all ready for building. So, just a number of projects are going on here in order to enhance our facilities. The last two are supporting FBO growth. The FBO, as you know, our fixed base operator, it's our gas station, as you probably commonly would know it on the airport, but certainly they provide a lot of other services and maintenance and repair avionics, flight training, a number of those things, so we're looking to support them, engaging them to ensure that there's, have a strong operation. We want to support expanded services, including some of these new avionics things that are happening, and develop some new FBO facilities. We need a new, as part of the requirements on an airfield, you need this arrival and departure building for people that are coming in. They need some additional, so we'll be looking at over the next couple of years to kind of expand that facility. And the final one is demonstrating value of STC through proactive stakeholder engagement. Things like this. We want to present to our stakeholders, to our county boards, a time or two a year, want to engage community leaders at airport stakeholders. We want to host public events. We'd love to hold an airshow again, kind of looking at some of those options, and then partner with educational institutions. This is one that is getting a lot of traction. As we all know, there's a shortage of the education and the trades, and airplane mechanics is one of the areas that it is really difficult. There's a couple schools in the state, one in the Twin Cities, about a three-year waiting list to become, to get into school to become an airline mechanic, and Fifa Falls is about a two-year waiting. So, there's been a lot of traction here in the last six months or over the past year to partner with Minskew. The airlines have committed some money, some resources to it. The airport is working with them. We're going to need to provide some space and a facility that we can lease to them long-term, but we're really excited about this opportunity and hoping it has lots of support in the legislature. As I mentioned, this bigger base that we draw from now, a lot more legislators are interested in the St. Cloud Airport and our, our boards and our, all of our stakeholders, so we think that this is a real likelihood that we'll be able to get this project up and running, that potentially Minskew and St. Cloud Technical and Community College could have an airline mechanic school running here in the St. Cloud area, hopefully within the next couple of years. So, with that, I would open it to any questions.
Any questions? Steve?
Mr. Chair, John, I want to thank you for being on this board. I truly appreciate it. And of course, Mr. Johnson, you being on the board too. How long's it been since you've been on the board now, Kevin?
Since January.
January? What have you learned?
I've only made one meeting. I'm still learning the ins and outs of it. Get it my feet wet.
I, I also want to thank you guys for representing us at Benton County and in coming to the board and you guys giving this information to us. I truly appreciate that, Bill.
Mr. Chair, John, thank you for the update. Appreciate that. Just a couple of quick questions. Back to parking. What are the current costs to park and how many spaces are available now?
So, I'm going to ask if it's okay, Bill Towell, to address that. He deals with that on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Yeah, it's a nine-dollar fee, which is still less than kind of other airports that we've surveyed in the region, Duluth, Rochester, Eau Claire, those airports were still less than them. And it's, we've got about five-hundred-and-fifty stalls out there. About half of them are on hard-surface tar, and the other half are kind of this, what we, we kind of consider overflow or kind of this gravel lot that we have. So, it's all, all nine bucks, but like, like Mr. Quaidy said, is, yeah, about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar revenue from that. And, you know, at the end of the day, that's a user fee pay system, which is great, and, you know, we get, you know, more than fifty percent of the users of the airport are from outside of our three counties. So, it's, you know, we're getting that revenue from folks other than your constituents.
One last question. It's kind of high season right now, so of that five-hundred-and-fifty stalls, about how many are?
Yeah, I, I bet we have about thirty, thirty-three percent, about a third of it is open, where, like Mr. Quaidy said, we were literally plowing snow out on the county side of the road. I mean, not to get them out on, so we, they'd have a place not to be on the edge of the road. And, and this year, we've got, we've got some capacity, generating the same revenue. It's not, you know, dissuading anybody from flying out. All of our, you know, the employment numbers are still up, so it's not saying that anybody is not using the airport because of that nine-dollar fee, but rather, if they're like me, I live pretty close to the airport, I'll get dropped off and I'll leave a spot open for somebody that, that might need it.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
I guess the only thing I really like that you, you're targeting the Northwest Metro because I used to have a son that lived in the Northwest Metro, and he would have liked to see way more coming out of St. Cloud. And then, what is the, how much revenue does the National Guard generate for us?
Thanks, John. We don't generate a lot of on-airport revenue. That really comes from family, you know, back, back in the day, it's, I think we're, I think we're, it's a dollar a year for fifty years. However, it's really the economic impact of a lot of those families moving to this area and the region and, and really producing kind of that tax support and those kind of things, but.
Spending money in Benton County?
Yes. The other thing, though, is, is very important, is the fact that we also get these military operations, right? Takeoffs and landings. The FAA looks at those very highly. They're, they're heavily weighted in terms of when we go after grant funds, that they look at those kind of operations. If it's just a regular small airplane, you know, that's, that's an average operation, but when you start talking about LifeLink or commercial airline or military, those go into a different bucket, and then it, we get maybe a higher consideration for grant funds in the future.
Great. Anything else? Any other questions?
No, just appreciate.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Yep.
Land Services, Roxanne.
Sarah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Sierra Cotter instead of Roxanne today, as you can see. What you have in front of you today is the solid waste facility license renewals. They're for waste management, Minden Transfer Station, Hinkamire Demolition Landfill, TKI Demo Landfill, and Tri-City Organics. All five of them are permitted in good standing with MPCA and Benton County ordinance. All of the facilities have been sent the requirements. They have not requested any changes to their permits or license. Currently, or each facility currently meets the solid waste requirements. Per ordinance, county board is asked to set the bonding and insurance requirements. Currently, the bond is at ten thousand and insurance minimum liability is set at one-point-five million. No facilities are paying into the test wall contingency fund, as Hinkamire Landfill has already set the maximum amounts, and staff is requesting no changes at this time. In summary, we are requesting two motions. First, to have the board set bonding and insurance amounts, and second is to direct the chair to sign the attached facility licenses.
Okay. So, we got the first part of the public hearing done. We will now open the public hearing, and first we'll hear from staff, and we already did. Is there anyone here in the audience to address the county board on this item? If so, please come to the podium and state the, state your name and address and where you're from. Nope?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Has, has there been, let's see. Has there been any emails, letters, or other communications to be read into the record?
There is not.
Has the department received any comments or concerns from state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda?
There has not.
Is there any official action was required by the affected township? And if there was, was, what was this action?
There was not.
The county board will now have time. Time for questions and staff discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions or comments from board members before we take action on this item?
None from you, Mr. Chair.
Pretty cut and dried.
Yep.
So, entertain a motion to accept the, the, or the public hearing and present the transfer licenses.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to set the bond at ten thousand dollars and the liability insurance minimum at one and a half million.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All called to question. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And Mr. Chair, also move to direct the chair to sign the attached facility licenses.
Second.
Any other discussion? Our chair is not here, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Now, we'll move on to Benton County Soil and Water Conservation District. See, jury's here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jay.
Good morning, jury.
Waiting for permission to leave my chair and come up and speak with you. Wow, another annual report. We've got, only got fifteen minutes, so I'm going to do this a little bit backwards. You've all got the report. Before I get into things, do you have any, any questions about any specific things in the report, any areas of the report that I should address bef, bef, so I don't skip over anything? Okay.
No.
Well, then, I will go through a few different sections and ask you to follow along, if you would, please. Let's see here. Let's go to page eight. I'm going to start off talking a little bit about finances. The reason why I want to bring this up with my presentation to the county board is I know economic development, of course, is really important to Benton County, and the activities that we do do have a definitely positive impact on economic development of the county. So, that top bar chart up there, you can see our operational expenses support was eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, little over eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, and a lot of that is state and federal funding. Benton County's portion is, for last year, was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. So, of course, our staff, a lot of them live and work and recreate in Benton County, so there's a return on your investment there just in bringing in state and federal funds. Reason why I bring it up is, I do ask, if you ever talk to your legislators, state or federal, just please remind them of the importance of supporting their soil and water district programs. As you know, we don't have taxing authority. We rely on the goodwill of others, you know, and that's a really important part for operational purposes, as, of course, as well as their commitment from Benton County each year. On the bottom, you can see there was about three-point-one million, just under three-point-two million in dollars spent on conservation in the county. If you flip the page over to pay, over to nine, you'll see how that's distributed. I found some new research. When I've done this report in the past, I've been, I always asked to estimate what's the economic impact of those dollars being re, not only just brought into the county, but then invested into the goods and services that our landowners are, are purchasing to get their work done. And I've taken what I have felt to be a pretty conservative route in the past, estimating about fifty percent, but found some research. Maybe we'll get into, oh, in a couple of months here when we talk about budgeting for next year, but I found some research that actually would estimate that those dollars recirculate in our county at forty-six cents on a dollar to eighty-three cents on the dollar. So, I've revised our estimate for this year. I, we feel like our dollars, outside dollars that we bring into Benton County are reinvested, about two-million dollars worth into our community, so. Those are small numbers. That, you know, that's got an impact on the viability and the prosperity of Benton County certainly, so. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on the, on that part, but I did want to point that out, that those estimates have changed, so. Okay, let's talk about maybe some highlights. The next page, page ten, education and outreach. We've been expanding our program for quite a few years now, and we've got a list of some of the activities there. I just want to highlight maybe some of the new things that we took on this year. We worked with Sherburne on the Women in Agriculture meeting down at the Farm Friends Barn in Becker. Of course, this is our, was our anniversary year. We did have the parade float. Ran through a lot of candy in a hurry. Especially when you've got a couple little girls that really like to throw candy, so that was a really fun event. It was nice to, it was nice to do that. A couple of our staff went out to Foley Middle School here and talked about conservation. That was new. Spark is a program for teaching youth about conservation and outdoor stuff. First year for that, St. Cloud State University. Of course, we had the We Are Water campaign down, down in Becker for the One Water One Plan kickoff, if you will, an event. We did a field day at the Brian and Glenn Cashmere Farm to talk about soil health practices and water conservation. Got into a little bit about irrigation. That was, we haven't had field days for quite a while, so that was a pretty big event. The bottom one that you've got listed there, the Soil Health Team Meetings, that's, that's a leap of faith of the district to get into our soil health program that we've been developing since, I think, twenty-seventeen. And we've got pretty serious about it this year with the two field days that I mentioned and some other activities. We do have a small group of farmers that's, has met now three times. The, the last meeting was actually last night down at the fire hall here in Foley, and it's a way for farmers to connect with each other and talk about soil health kind of practices. So, we had nineteen farmers last night and four or five, I don't know, I'll just call it agency staff, for lack of a better term. So, that was a really good meeting last night. It keeps growing every time. We also had a soil health field day at Dave Emzlander Farm, which isn't, which isn't in your report. We can't fit everything into the report easily without having really small print, so we do the best we can. So, I guess my point is, we really enhanced our outreach So I guess my point is we really enhanced our outreach last year, educating the community. The soil health meeting last night was great, and, you know, we had a farmer that committed just through discussions to take it apart of his field and just not doing any tillage. He's just going to try it on like three acres. He's going to basically use his existing equipment to try to no-till soybeans into his corn residue. And to me, that's what it's all about, you know? Getting people to try different things and figure out what works for them, so we're working really hard on the outreach. Okay, any questions on that? Hopefully, you're happy with the direction we're going there? Okay, let's go to page 20. Well sealing program. Commissioner Pop, you're on the Rum River One Water One Plan. You've heard about that watershed and group wanting to do more with sealing wells. There's a safety concern with wells, the dug wells that are left open, especially the ones that don't have a cover or don't have an adequate, you know, cover, wood cover, maybe that's rotting. And so they're working on that. They're actually, Commissioner Pop, I think at this next meeting, you'll be approved a work plan for, to do 20 or 30 wells in that watershed. Well, our program really got kicked off heavily in 2014 through our water plant efforts. And in 2023, we did 10 more wells, which brought us to 100, 100 wells that we had sealed since we made a push in 2014. So we're pretty proud of that. It's nice getting those wells sealed. It's one of those things that's sort of out of sight, out of mind when there's, you know, properties are sold, those well locations aren't always disclosed, you know, we're finding, and so just from water quality perspective, certainly. The bottom right picture actually happens to be the well that was right out here. So we partnered with Benton County, so thank you guys as well for that, so. Yeah, that was kind of a nice milestone to hit. Okay, I want to touch on page 24, if you will. It's the wetland restoration page. We partner with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on nearly all of our wetland restoration projects. They, we've got a relationship that's really good. We use the strengths of their staff and their programs, and they lean on us to fill in holes and gaps in program funding and to be out on site during construction and have the, I would say, without a doubt, the best wetland restoration program in the area that our U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service representative covers, no doubt. We probably do about half the wetland restorations in this area, a third to a half, just in our one county. So last year, we did 24 basins. The year before, it was 26. That's a massive number. All my years as a technician with the Soil and Water District, I didn't do 24 myself as a technician, so that's an outstanding progress. Restoring those wetlands is so important, and we're focusing on areas that are currently not farmed. They're not cropped. Sometimes they're pastured, but a lot of times they're just old pasture that's no longer used. The county is changing, right? We've got less dairy, we've got less grazing, and so we're taking these idle areas, more or less, and restoring them back to something that's going to benefit our county in floodwater, you know, retention, water quality benefits, that type of thing, so. So my message there is, I guess, if you see Nathan from our office or any of the other staff, pat them on the back. That stuff only happens when you've got the right staff and the right connections with your partners. So that's an amazing program. The bottom left, I think maybe only three of you, three or four of you were on a tour last year. The picture on the bottom left is that fish barrier that is sort of the beginning of a project to maybe look at doing some management of Mayhew Lake, disconnecting those two watersheds, so we can start looking at maybe some carp control and other things maybe we'll get into later, but that's sort of like, the first step is disconnecting those two watersheds that historically used to be disconnected. And so the benefit for Little Rock is now the carp can't go all the way up and during spawning season, you know, into, all the way up from Mayhew Lake and go spawn, and either their offspring or the carp themselves go, you know, down, choose to go down to Little Rock Lake now. So it's going to help really both lakes, so. It was a pretty unique project, and you guys helped support that, helped waive some of the fees for the landowner who really wasn't benefiting from this project, so I just wanted to point out that that picture's in there, and thank you for your support on that. All right, so. I feel like I'm in a little bit of a hurry this morning to keep you guys on schedule. So two more things. We did a project in St. Cloud, again, just trying to keep the report to a reasonable size. We didn't put the Northeast St. Cloud Underground Regional Treatment System in our annual report. Commissioner Schlangen, you were out there this summer. Thank you for visiting that site. I think hopefully it was beneficial to you to see what's going on in St. Cloud. Northeast St. Cloud is, it's an area that's kind of older, the development is older, the standards, if you will, for development were different when that part of town was developed. And there's just a lot of soil from gravel, businesses, and residential areas that gets into the sewer system. And it's also a very visible problem when you drive across the bridge on Highway 23 right after rain, you can really see, you know, the chocolate milk-colored water coming out of that area of town. So City of St. Cloud's been great to work with. We have a plan. It's approximately a 15-year schedule to do a number of projects out there with the goal of reducing the sediment coming out of that area by 70%. That's an ambitious goal, but it needs it, and the reason why, one of the reasons why you should care as a county board is we do want to make sure water quality issues that are that important and that visible are dealt with so we can continue to do business and have expansions in that part of St. Cloud. And so I'm happy to report that with that project, we're over halfway through our goal of reducing the sediment by 70%, so. Sort of a half step or half milestone, but yeah, we're about seven, eight years into that project, and we're about half done. Those undergrown projects are, well, they're just, they're a challenge, I guess, to get staged at the right time. That one worked out well because of all the reconstruction going on, and the business just to the north of it was looking to do a little bit of work in their parking lot and wanting to have a little bit more parking area as well. So the city was able to work with them with those two things coming together, and we got that project in, so. Can't remember the dollar amount, but it was a couple hundred thousand dollar project that we had out there. Yeah, with that, with that, I think I'll stop. There's a lot of things that I didn't cover, but I think I'll stop right there. And sort of the highlights of the stuff that went on in 2023. Let's see if there's any questions from you all.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, just comment, thank you, Jerry, for all your work putting this report together. I was able to review it in detail last night, so it's always fun to look back and kind of remember the things that happened in the past year, so I appreciate that and all the work you and your staff do. It's a huge impact to Benton County.
You've got some of the greatest staff in the state.
Yeah.
You really do. We're so fortunate. Yeah.
Jerry, was there any, like through Bowser or DNR, is there any more funds coming available? I know there's a lot through NRCS. You know, they got a lot of money coming their way, but is there any money coming from the state for SWCDs?
Yes. Is your question related to getting project work?
Either project work or just general funding?
Okay, yeah, so, good question. So as you know, as you probably know, a big chunk of our funding came from what was called district capacity grants. That came from the Clean Water Fund, and that was always something that the Clean Water Council had $0 for. So we always started from zero and asked for an allocation. And every two years, we fought to get that allocation, and we had been successful, but it was always zeroed out. And so the last year, the legislature, they changed that to bring funding out of the general fund. So we do receive an allocation, Benton County, Benton SWCD receives about 161,000 that now comes out of the general fund each year.
Okay.
And so that's for two years. So the first allocation came last year in July, and then December was split, similar to what your county program aid is, I assume. And we'll get another allocation in July and December of this year. But the tails, unlike just about other government support, in the tails for the out years, it drops down. So right now, we're going to see a reduction of, I'm not sure what the exact number will be, but we start looking at 2025 and 26, it's going to drop down to maybe, I think my last calculation was about 129,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the 161 was an increase. The 121, 129 would be, you know, about the same as like four years ago. And now project funding, there's a lot of funding coming from the state for, especially for soil health-type practices, a lot of funding. We submitted a grant proposal that was specifically for staffing, which would fund a position for three and a half years. No matching requirements, just funding from the state would cover staff time and overhead expenses, and we should know by the 21st, which is, what, Thursday? If they meet their deadline or their goals, we'll know soon if we get funding for that, so. I've got my fingers crossed hard on that one. We already went out and advertised for sustainable farming technician to fill that slot. The market is so tight right now for staff, so we went ahead and hopefully got ahead of some of the other districts.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Jerry, is that just one-time funding, or do you think that'll keep on going for that position?
Yeah, good question. The state really can only fund, you know, for a biennium, two years. The commitment from Bowser is for, if I understand, they got a special permission to take this two-year funding and stretch it out over the duration of two biennium. So that's how they're committing to this. That's my understanding, at least, of how they're committing to a four-year, they're calling it a four-year, I'm calling it three and a half by the time they get the grants out. Yeah, beyond that, that's a much longer duration than we're used to. Typically, it's two years, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Oh, thanks, Jerry. We know all the good work that SWCD does in Benton County and for all the things that we get done whereby far and away the leader of counties.
Well, I appreciate that. I keep hearing that, and I'm believing it, too. When I see our reports, I believe it, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Jerry.
All right, thank you, guys.
Auditor Treasurer, Christine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm looking for a consider exception to the comp time for exempt auditor treasurer employees in our department. We have two exempt employees who have a 40-hour cap on their comp time. The presidential nomination primary election caused for a great amount of overtime. The first employee, she will have 50 hours that she would be forfeiting if her capped amount is not allowed to be extended. She has a scheduled vacation coming up that would be using that, and then she would get her bucket down to zero before the August primary election. Our second employee, same thing. She's asking for a payout of it due to the fact that her vacation hours are at a max as well, and she's losing vacation hours right now.
Mr. Chair, so Christine, can you just walk me through the state PNP expense reimbursement fund, how that kind of works?
So that reimburses us basically for everything except for the cost of the election equipment, voting equipment. It covers about 2,800 of the voting equipment, but the rest is left on us. So the PMP, right now, I'm working on the reimbursement. We're at about a $30,000 reimbursement right now, and it's costing the county about the 20, 25 to 2,800.
Okay, for the election?
Just for the election equipment.
And so in this particular case, the PMP expense reimbursement fund would cover the cost?
Would cover it all, yep.
Okay, you know, and we'll have two more elections, so are we going to have to revisit this, then?
Probably, I'm going to really try to get them to use the vacation, you know? I mean, we don't have a whole lot of double coverage in our office, so it's hard at times for people to take a lot of vacation. This was approved back in 2018 and in 2022, the same.
That was my next question to Monty. We've done this before, so.
We've done this.
Yes. Thanks, sorry, Mr. Chair, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah. I mean, you know, we see how much time goes into, you know, it's kind of sad that presidential primary was kind of forced upon us because, I mean, so few people use it for the monocost it is to county government.
Well, in this particular case, they're forced to do it.
Yeah, right. It's not, no.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to move for approval.
Second?
Most men made in a second for approval, reimbursement to two county employees for the election. Any other discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Jeff, no, you're next.
I am next, okay. Information item for you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. It's time to kick off our classification compensation maintenance program. And the first step is our consultant, Tessa Melvyn, DDA, to select the classifications to be reviewed, and they appear on the back of this agenda item. As I noted in the agenda item, it's primarily random selection, but I think Tessa also included some where she saw significant market disparities to try and address those. So we have about 100 classifications, and the goal there was to review about a third every year. So, you know, if, for example, you're getting questions from folks about, you know, hey, why is my position not reviewed this year? Again, it's primarily a random selection. The policy asks the consultant to make those choices, and you're going to get reviewed within a three-year cycle. So if you're not reviewed this year, it's either going to be next year or the following. So that, hopefully, folks can take some comfort in that. So instead of ever being once every 10 years, you'll get reviewed within a three-year cycle. So what will happen next is we'll be sending out abbreviated position questionnaire descriptions to each affected employee in those classifications. They'll go in and they'll describe any changes in their job since the last review, those that go to a supervisor for review, and then back to Tessa. So by June, Tessa will have recommendations to you regarding any possible changes in pay grade. So that's the goal, is to have this wrapped up by June. Let's see, I think that was really all I want. Oh, I should mention is next week, Tessa's going to be conducting kickoff meetings for employees in the affected classifications and supervisors. So she's going to do two sessions, I'm sorry, four total sessions, two for employees and two for supervisors next week. So that gets this process rolling. I think it's a pretty aggressive schedule. I think she's asking for those questionnaires, you'd be back in about two weeks to give her plenty of time to review all them, that back and forth that sometimes occurs and obviously complete the market studies as well. So again, Mr. Chair, just informational item, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I guess I don't have any, I mean, do we have any idea how many total number of employees will be affected on this one?
I'm sorry, I don't. You know, for example, you see, it includes social workers and eligibility specialists, that's a pretty good. There's what, thirty-eight some social workers, approximately the same eligibility specialist, so there's sixty right there. Definitely, this is, this is probably between a hun- I'll actually get you the exact number, though, it's rather me guessing. But it's, it's a fairly large number, includes all the deputy sheriffs.
Yeah.
So it's a pretty large number, yep, in terms of number of employees, yep.
And this will be all back information before budget time comes up then?
That was the whole goal, you're right. I mean, so the board will know the impact, the cost, before you are asked to set the preliminary budget and levy. So that's why we need this by June. And, right, so then it'll be presented to you all and for a decision, do you want to accept those or otherwise, so.
Yep, any other questions?
Thank you, Monte.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's Jeff. Updated Benton River Park.
Oh, he's got it.
Yeah, do I just put this? Hopefully this works. Morning.
Good morning.
We're even using drones, right, Jeff?
Yep.
Is that an unarmed drone?
Unarmed, yep. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll try to make this quick, I know you guys are very busy with a lot of other stuff, but I just, coming in today to give an update on the forestry management project that we've had going on out at Benton River Park. The cleanup from kind of phase two, we had the logging out at there, thinning the trees, removing the tree rows. And this next step has been a lot of cleanup and going through and prepping the land and getting it seeded with some native grasses. So, on this picture, you can kind of see where we had the fires going. That took care of a lot of the stuff, but to start out with, I'll just kind of recap. So we had removed three growths of trees, three windrows, as you call them, in the purple there. And then the RFP was broken in the two different projects. One being the cleanup and the removal of the stumps in the purple areas from the, from the, from the removal of the logging and stuff. And then the other RFP was for removing the Siberian elm and other invasive species, trees that are in the meadow areas in there, in that same area. So we put it all for bids. The first RFP was for the, for the purple areas, the places that were logged, cleaning it all up, moving the stumps. And that, that bid was rewarded to Minnesota Native Landscaping at a cost of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. We did have a very good group of bidders that came out there for this project. Our partners on this project was Minnesota Native, Great River Greening, which is a nonprofit organization that came in and helped us with the RFPs and getting everything straightened out and helping us along the way as far as getting everything done the right way. And getting grant money was a big part of it, of course. The other part, RFP, was for the cleaning up of the meadow grass areas, prep work of the ground and then, which still needs to get done, is the seeding. So as we sit right now on that, and that was given, granted to Prairie Restorations Incorporated for eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. So altogether, the project grand total was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. With the county being responsible for ten percent of that, so twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy cents, which we can cover with the, with the money that we've took in on the logging that we did out there. So that's great. So Great River Greening was able to come up with grants for this project in an amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. So that's a very nice chunk of money. This is some of the equipment that they had out there working the ground. This is a forestry tiller that they went through and, and took care of a lot of the brushy stuff and bringing it down. They are bringing a bigger version of this out yet to do a final till of the whole area that's, where the windrows were, to get the stumps down below grade and to take care of any invasive species that might want to come back through there with buckthorn and stuff like that. So till it down low enough to, to make sure, assure that that stuff's not going to come back. Just some more of the heavy equipment that they had out. It's been a pleasure dealing with, working with Great River Greening as a partner on this as well as Minnesota Native Landscaping and Prairie Restoration Incorporated. Their, their competitors, you know, to say Prairie Restorations, yeah, Prairie Restorations Incorporated and Minnesota Native Landscaping, but they worked very well together and very happy with the communication that they've all done and the work that they've gone through with this. We're actually ahead of schedule from where we thought we'd be at this point due to the weather playing a big part in it. This is just a picture showing kind of what it looked like when the trees were removed and we had all that brush and stubble that's in there. And here's, as of the first of the month, what everything looks like as of right now. As you can see, everything's been taken care of. You'll notice that some of the areas are darker than the others. The darker areas is actually from burning that Minnesota Native Landscaping did. They really did go above and beyond on this to make sure that they were doing things in a safe and proper manner. One of the things they did is they did burn off the, the grasses before they did any of the, the brush burning, just to assure that they weren't going to have any running fires or any problems with anything else. So they've been, yeah. Can't say it enough that I'm very pleased with the progress that they've done and how they were able to get in there and just get to this point within, actually, probably three, four weeks that they were able to get it to this, once they got in there with their equipment. So as far as timeline, the plan was that they were going to do a fall seeding on this. Still coordinating with them to see, Minnesota Native Landscaping does got to come in and do a final tilling. And then after that, Prairie Restorations is going to come in and they got a bunch of little tree stubble that they're going to be taking out in the, in the meadow grass areas. And then, I'm not sure at this point if they're being, we're ahead of the game now, that if we're going to look at doing a spring seeding or if they're still going to wait with a fall seeding. If they do wait for a fall seeding, they did talk about coming in and putting something down to help with erosion, so, you know, keep that from happening at all. So in a nutshell, that's where we're sitting and any questions or anything?
Mr. Chair, Jeff, what did they do with what was left of the burn material?
They buried a little bit, but they were, they were actually to burn quite a bit of it. I mean, they were burning a better part of two weeks, day and night. They had someone out there all night long feeding fires and stuff, so.
Any issues with permitting from the DNR on that?
Uh, no, no, they, they're professionals as far as that, they've, they do it a lot, so it's, they're able to work very well with them. We did make sure that we let dry snow and the local fire departments and police departments and dispatch and all that, everything was going on and everything worked out as well as can be expected.
Looks awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
It's good to see progress and work, so.
It's just envisioning corn in there.
Hey, at one point in time, I had a lot of people thought that we should just doze that down and turn it into an irrigated field. I'm sure.
There's enough of them.
Get it back on the tax base, that was a big thing that you heard a lot.
Yeah. There's enough.
It's, it's used, it's a county asset by every means and I think we'll, you know, have to forward and have a plan.
Mr. Chair, so you may be wondering, kind of, so what's next for this big field? And as we discussed last night in Park Commission, we want to continue working with Great River Greening, potentially Solon Water and other agencies to come up with a plan for, you know, what do we now do with this parcel of land? I think there'll be some, you know, of course, tree restoration, you know, more native type species. But I think, so I think we just talked about possibly a park commission meeting this summer to bringing in those experts to help us plan the next phases. You know, there's a lot of buckthorn out there that needs to be controlled. So that's, I think, kind of what's on tap next for, for this area.
We've been talking last night, the low spot and the dark spot in the middle, that's a low ground. Maybe we can even get soil and water to do a wetland restoration in there. We don't know if the soil's conducive or if it will hold water, but they have, you know, they have ways to get water to a place like that, so.
They did, SWCD did reach out to you in regards to that, right?
Yeah, right, so we want to try and tap into any grants we can find for forestry management, prairie management, invasive species management, all those things, yep, absolutely.
You know, we heard from Jerry, I mean, you can't believe what USDA and NCRS is, money that they are putting towards clean water, soil health and that. I mean, talking to Brian over here, they, they won't be able to spend it, what they have, they don't have the applicants or the staff capacity to get this done. You know, it's a big, it's a big thing right now, you know, clean water, clean air.
And with working with Great River Greening, I know they are, they'd be more than happy to work with us and come up with some more grant money to continue this project as far as cleaning up the other meadow areas as well as cleaning up a lot of buckthorn that we've got out there, so.
You know, you look at the legacy money we got, that was what, eight hundred some thousand? We had another two hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty some thousand.
We got over a million bucks for this benefit to Benton County's park.
It costs us twenty-five grand, which we use their trees to pay for.
Right, you know, I think when they, when they purchased the whole land, I think it was right around that two million dollars. And so, you know, we've added another million besides what we got before, so, you know, we're probably looking at a four, five, six million dollar piece of property out there.
Great.
So thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
County engineer, Mr. Bird.
All right, good morning, commissioners on this first day of spring.
Good morning.
My national day calendar also tells me it's National Poultry Day, so.
Awesome.
No reason for anybody to be in a foul mood today.
Oh, boy. I don't know, you got too much sleep last night.
Or too much time that he could figure that out.
We're going to find some more ditch stuff for him.
Well, let's just move right along then. So I come before you today with a situation. The Sauk Rapids EDA is working towards selling some property in downtown Sauk Rapids. Just to give you some reference here, it's Benton Drive in First Street. I also have an aerial that kind of show you where we're at. So we're right here, some of these lots here. When they were researching the deeds on those properties, they found that we had some easements that dated to nineteen forty-seven and nineteen forty-nine. At one time, well, you remember Benton Drive was a trunk highway, then a county highway and it no longer exists as a county highway. So to be able to allow the Sauk Rapids EDA to sell those to do whatever their economic development project is, we, we need to vacate those easements. I looked at those and found that there's no county purpose or county highway purpose to hold in, holding any easements in that location there. So a lot of back and forth with our assistant attorney, Michelle, and their attorney. We feel like we've got deeds and a resolution to vacate those easements. That's kind of a quick and dirty summary. So that would be, a couple of things we need to do today would be to adopt a resolution and then authorize the vice board chair to sign the, the deeds today. I will acknowledge we have Todd Schultz from the city of Sauk Rapids here, if you want to, want him to kind of speak on what they're doing and what they need in that location. And yeah, also Michelle's in the audience if there's any questions about the procedure.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like Mr. Schultz to speak about what's happening because I see the construction going on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Appreciate your consideration on this matter. We've been working on redeveloping this site for about ten years, I think about a good ten years now. That used to be the old Sauk Rapids locker plant. We also have that old strip mall on that property, we had a dry cleaners in there, the old Saint, Saint Stephen State Bank was in there. And so we purchased that about ten years ago and demolished those properties. And, and we've been waiting for a good project to, to come along and, and, you know, continue with the redevelopment efforts. So we're working with Scooter's Coffee for the quarter, this would be a two-lot plat. So Scooters would go on the corner. We're going to be installing the sewer here later, probably sometime next month for that project. We have somebody interested in lot number two, we'll see what happens with that, but we'll, we'll kind of kick some different ideas around there, but hopefully that'll develop sooner rather than later. But yeah, this is a really old piece of property. This plat dates back to just right after the Civil War. A lot of things have happened on this property in the past hundred and fifty some years. And so in my professional career, I've never seen a more difficult plat to get to the finish line than this one. There was a lot of loose ends that had to be tied up. So, so appreciate your consideration, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No?
I'm just glad it's seen, it's going to be developed.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And out of our hands.
Yeah.
I'll just acknowledge some things that were different than in your package. Todd referenced some lots, one and two, those are the modern plats. If you look at the deeds, we referenced lots fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty and block sixty-five of the original town, now village of Sauk Rapids, that was one of them. And so the lots, if, and the other deed to the, is lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty and lots, block sixty-five of the original town. So those, those lots don't, if you were wondering why those lots don't, don't match up. We also, the deeds acknowledged, Commissioner Gopinski is the chair signing it, so we updated that to recognize Commissioner Pop as the vice chair to be signing it. Likewise, with the, the resolution to be adopted today has been updated to acknowledge Commissioner Pop as the county board vice chair. So basically, the resolution would be to pursuant to Minnesota Statute one sixty-three point one-one, subdivision four, vacates and relinquishes and releases its interests in the nineteen forty-seven easement described in deed record number eighty-seven, page five-five-five, Benton County, Minnesota, which encumbered lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty and lot sixty-five of the original town, now village of Sauk Rapids. According to the plat and survey thereof and the officer, office of the register of deeds in and for Benton County at the time, the nineteen forty-seven easement was executed for highway purposes. So that's what we're asking the board to consider adopting that resolution to vacate that. So that would be two actions, adopt the resolution and then authorize the vice chair signature on the deeds.
Mr. Chair, just one clarification, doesn't matter to me, but in your, it says board of commissioner authorizes the board chair, does that need to have vice chair in it? Does it matter?
Oh, right there, as opposed to the signature block. Probably, probably correct.
Okay.
Before we print that off, the signature, we'll probably put vice chair in that location, I missed that as I was updating it.
All, all of them, there's three pages. One, one said Jared and two of them had Scott Johnson on there.
On the deeds, yes.
The deeds.
So those have been updated to reflect all three locations. The deed to the city of Sauk Rapids, yeah, Ed Pop, vice chair. Vice chair, county board commissioners, yeah, vice chair, county board commissioners, that's, that's one deed. And then the other deed to the Sauk Rapids EDA.
They changed them after they gave.
It says the same thing, so. Yeah, those were updated just this morning when, when I realized that Commissioner Gopinski was not present.
Mr. Chair, Michelle, is there anything we should be concerned about?
Nope, so what really kind of happened is when trunk highway ten was taken or took over kind of that county easement, that nineteen forty-seven easement, it took a more narrow path than the blanket easement that the county took. And you never want blanket easements, so what's kind of remaining is that blanket easement that, you know, doesn't serve any purpose.
Thank you. As I'm thinking here, I think, another thing, normally in this kind of situation, we'd be required to serve notice of the owners of the parcels affected. I, I found the email, we got an email yesterday, it sounds like city of Sauk Rapids had their attorney draft up, they're waiving that right so we can keep this moving as quickly as possible. Serving notice usually takes a few days to. So we can, um, keep this moving as quickly as possible. Serving notice usually takes a few days to actually serve that notice, so. Correct, that's a good point. After the resolution is adopted, that gets posted where the county posts such things for, for ten days, so.
Mr. Chair, Michelle, can we do this motion altogether, or do you want them separate?
I think you could probably do them all together.
Okay, and make a motion, adopt a resolution vacating the excess right-of-way and authorize the vice board chair to sign the quick claim deed.
Second, most been made in second. Any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed?
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks for cleaning this up.
Engineers update?
Yeah, I was going to provide an update. Uh, so since the last time we talked about the Cassau seven reconstruction project, we have received the easements from the Department of Natural Resources. So we do, um, um, have assigned easements from them. We've made payment on those easements. So they're in our position now. So that's good. Uh, the downside is we're still waiting on a US Army Corps of Engineers permit. We still need a, a DNR permit for public water permit because that does have a, uh, open body of water. We need a section, what's called a section four oh one permit from the Minnesota MPCA. Uh, so we don't have all those permits in hand yet. We're still working on those. Um, we need those in hand before we get federal highway approval to go out for bid letting, uh, since it has the federal money. So we're still pushing to get that. The, the, the reality of it is we're not going to be advertising anytime soon. We're hoping to still be, get authorization before the end of the state fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth. So that's our goal right now. Um, if we don't get authorization from federal highways to, uh, go out for bids before June thirtieth, it brings in a whole nother administrative process of updating the statewide transportation improvement program, uh, moving it to a different fiscal year, even though it could be just a few days from June to July. It's a new state fiscal year, which requires a lot of administrative work on, uh, updating that. But since we do have the DNR easement, we do have, uh, the right now to go in there and clear trees. As we talked about, that's a requirement to have all trees cleared before April first because of the northern long-eared bat. I, everything today is going to be good and then bad. The bad side is that we had our tree clearing contractor already complete the work on the rest of the project, and so they pulled out. And they don't think they can get back in before April first to finish that work. So, but, the good side, here's, here's the roller coaster of emotions with projects. We're able to use our maintenance forces, so we have our maintenance crew out there right now, uh, dropping the trees. And, and the requirement is the trees just need to be felled or they just need to be dropped. Then we'll have our contractor come back in, um, and that can be completed after April first to clean up the, the logs and the stumps and, and get all that hauled away.
Mr. Chair, will that be a change order on the contractor's side to come back?
Um, yeah, so since they didn't, we, we had the quantity, no, I take that back. When we advertised it, we didn't have the DNR easement yet. So, yeah, it will be a change order to have them come back and, um, chip up. The requirement for the rest of the project was, uh, any logs that the adjacent landowners didn't want, um, the contractor was to chip those off and, and, and haul them away. They could use them as mulch if we disturbed the soil in areas. We could use that, those wood chips as mulch. But so we will have a change order. Um, we did get a quote for doing that. It's in the range of a, a few thousand dollars to come back in and chip that up.
And then additionally, it puts us in a not great position for, to be advertising for that type of construction. I mean, these people have got projects lined up, I would assume.
Yeah, well, that, those are happening now. Um, interesting thing, we always want to time it so we get it early. Um, we have seen though, uh, last year being one of them, we were late and I think we had the benefit of some contractors not getting work on other ones, so they were still kind of hungry. Um, I don't know, we'll just have to, to see. So, um, other projects though, um, uh, our reclaim jobs on County Road seven, eleven, and twenty-five, those are on my desk. Uh, I have to review the plans and sign them and get them to state aid for approval. So I've got two out of the three reviewed. I should get the third one reviewed today. And hopefully we're, we're going out for bids in the next few weeks, couple of weeks on that. Um, we did get some H SIP striping money, uh, for some striping on the projects that we reclaimed and overlaid last year. So those have been signed and sent off to, since that's federal money, it has to be approved by federal highways in St. Paul as well. But so we should be doing some contract striping this year. The twenty-nine and one roundabout, um, last time we talked, I mentioned the, uh, Excel Energy Pole that's going to be in conflict, it's a roundabout. We did receive an estimate from them on Thursday last week. Um, their estimate right now is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to relocate that pole. And the problem is their, their easements for their pole predate our road easements, um, at that location. So I'm afraid we're going to be on the hook. We're still going to push them and ask some questions. They broke it down for us. It was over seven hundred thousand dollars alone for construction, uh, forty thousand dollars for additional easements to move their pole out. Um, we would be okay with them putting it in our right-of-way since we have wider right-of-way width there. Excel wants to get their own easements, just so if this ever happens again in the future, the road authority would be on the hook for relocating it. So they have forty thousand dollars in that estimate for easements. And then another hundred and forty thousand dollars for engineering, which we're going to question that and see where that, it didn't even cost us a hundred and forty thousand dollars to have five miles of road, uh, designed and reconstructed, uh, or was designed for that reconstruction, so.
Chris, wasn't one of your questions going to be also about the pole that's on the east side of, uh, May Lake?
Yeah, so the seven hundred and thirty, what we'd like to see is some more breakdown of the seven hundred thousand dollars for the pole relocation. Make sure that that's not including, yeah, that guy wire pole on the east side, which we believe, we've proved that our road easement on that side of the road does predate, uh, their pole. And we should not be liable for the relocation costs of that. The other thing is, before anything starts working, there will be, they would like to see an agreement between Benton County and Excel. So, um, I just, by saying that, just put more work on Michelle, reviewing an agreement. And then they're saying still, uh, twelve to fifteen months after the date of that agreement before it's clear of construction, clear for construction.
I'm sorry, but we've got to push them. We got to push this. We need to get this roundabout done.
Um, yeah, so that's additional cost. Now here we go, here we go, on the upswing on the emotions for this project. Next week at the APO TAC meeting, um, the TAC is going to vote on giving Benton County another four hundred and forty thousand dollars of federal money as part of a carbon reduction program that was in the IIJA. Um, that money has to be, uh, spent in federal fiscal year twenty-five, which our roundabout project was already scheduled for that. And, um, APO staff looked at eligible projects that are already programmed for that year. And our roundabout project was the only one in the region that fit that, that, uh, requirement. So it doesn't close the gap of this additional Excel, but, uh, we are going to get, it looks like, I, I anticipate the TAC voting for it, um, and then it'd have to go to the APO policy board after that. But it looks like we could get another four hundred and forty thousand dollars of federal money to go towards that roundabout project.
Better than one.
Yeah.
Boy, he's just full of it, isn't he?
Well, he's just like this.
It is like that. On the maintenance side, uh, we're working on municipal maintenance agreements. All of our municipal maintenance agreements with Sock Rapids, Sartell, Foley expired at the end of twenty twenty-three. So that's, that's another thing that's on my desk is any updates that we want to, and we haven't even sent drafts to the cities yet. Uh, but, um, those will be new agreements that we need to renew, um, like we've had, uh, previous years. Those are three-year agreements, and it allocates a cost per lane mile to those cities to do, uh, maintenance. Primarily snow plowing and some other routine maintenance on our cas, on our county roads, not just Cassau's, um, but our county roads within their city limits, so. Um, other than that, maintenance has been working on crack filling. Um, and like I said, clearing trees for the construction projects, and everybody's excited, hoping that we get some snow so they can do some snow plowing maybe this winter, so. That's all I have for engineers updates unless there's any questions.
Any fuel pre-buying that you know of going on?
Uh, no, we haven't, uh, looked at that. We, yeah, we're, you're hearing the same thing, you know, about fuel prices going up. So, um, we haven't, yeah, pursued pre-buying anything yet.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Commissioner meeting updates, let's go first.
I'll go. March sixth, so in a lot of conservation, uh, district area meeting up in Royalton. I was, uh, privileged to be asked by Jerry and his team to do the opening welcome. And again, thank you to Monte and to Jerry for supplying some bullet points for that opening discussion, so I appreciate that. Um, of course, Commissioner Heine and I and Monte had human services team meeting, uh, last week um, in regards to moving ahead with some more applications. I was able to attend the Foley City Council. They are very appreciative of the ARPA dollars that were sent their way or going to be sent their way for their project. Um, and also was able to attend, uh, St. George Township meeting, their annual meeting, because I have it at four o'clock. All the other townships in my district are at eight, so I was at my own in Maywood that evening. And then last week, uh, we did a planning commission meeting and Chris was in attendance. And basically our only agenda item was to discuss mapping. He reviewed with us the mapping that we requested in our cowl about Cassau twenty-five. So we had good discussion with the planning commission on that, and I believe then he'll be bringing that formally to the planning commission for a recommendation of the county board, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'll go next. So, yep, uh, I had the interviews with Scott and Monte. Uh, and then I had, let's see, criminal justice, Shack and Career Solutions, all in the same day. Criminal justice, uh, talked about building security. They're doing a study on the security at the courthouse. The cat team talked a lot about mental health, big issues, of course, teens and adults. At this point in time, the STS program had one female, uh, forty to fifty inmates daily. Ten of them are females. Uh, let's see, Career Solutions. I can say we finally had a very positive outcome on our, uh, audit, thank you. So we've been struggling for three years. Cause we've had changes through the process, and we finally came out with a positive audit, so that was great. And then I had another Shack meeting on the eighth, I mean, not, not, on the fourteenth. And what did I do yesterday? I was somewhere yesterday too. I don't even remember any.